June 25th, 2025 Neighborhood Board Number 34 Meeting is called to order. Welcome to our Makakilo Kapole Honokai Hale Community Forum. My name is Anthony Macanaparis and I serve as your board chair. We are holding a hybrid meeting and have community members online via WebEx and in person at Kapole. Oh, Kapole, hello. Kapole Hale. Excuse me, tongue twister. For order and decorum, if you wish to speak, please raise your real hand or your virtual hand and wait for the presiding officer to recognize you before speaking. Please introduce yourself, your name, and only address your comments to the chair. If I miss anyone's hands in person or online, please get the attention of our new Neighborhood Board Assistant Jeffrey Jones. Welcome, Jeffrey. Welcome to the team. Now speakers are reminded that they have three minutes to comment on any item on the agenda. And those giving reports this evening will have up to 10 minutes for their presentations. And presentation materials from the previous Neighborhood Boards are online. Tonight, we don't have any presentations, so we can spend more time on completing business, including having an extended public input section. Please remember again to state your name for the record before sharing any comments, questions, or testimony. And remember that this is our community forum, so everyone is asked and encouraged to operate in the spirit of Aloha, be free to vigorously debate agenda items, and remember to treat each other with respect, especially when you're passionately advocating. Let's honor each other and keep to the allotted times for speaking and collectively finish our forum in a timely manner. At this time, are there any procedural questions before we go on? Hearing none, can we ask our new Neighborhood Board Assistants to call the roll?
Alrighty. And I apologize in advance if I do butcher your last name. I did not practice before this meeting. Remember Bossler? Dudley? Ferrera? Not seeing online. Kaheli? Both not seeing online. Ton? Lidstone?
Eo.
Thank you. Singleton?
Here.
Ala? Now she commented in the chat that she's having trouble meeting her microphone, so she is present. And Chair Paris?
Eo.
All, we have forum for tonight, so we can go forward and conduct business. As this is the final meeting of this Neighborhood Board term, we have some outstanding administrative things that we need to accomplish. And therefore, I am going to ask the Board to amend the agenda with three items. The first is to allow for the reports of the permitted interaction groups established by Resolution in 2024 under Reports as the Last Item. Second, to add to Board Business at the end a response letter to the June 5th email sent to the Board from Representative Darius Kila, so our official response. And third, we'll add to Board Business under Item H, Approval of Written Summary for the Video Record of Wednesday, February 26, 2025, and also Approval of the Special Meeting Minutes Thursday, January 9, 2025. Is there any objection? Oh, Dr. Dudley moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Miki Ala. Any discussion on administratively putting in these last few things we need to get done? Anyone wishing to testify on this exciting topic? Hearing no one wishing to testify or discussion, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed say ahole. Any abstentions say kanalua. Hearing none, Chair calls it unanimous. So our agenda has been amended. And now let's get to our reports, starting with Honolulu Fire Department.
Aloha. Aloha. Firefighter 3 Kenny Shido from the East Kapole Fire Station, representing in Honolulu Fire Department. Okay, for incident statistics for May, we had one structured fire, three wildland brush fires, 10 nuisance fires, one cooking fire, and 18 activated alarms. For emergencies, we had 188 medical calls, zero motor vehicle collisions with pedestrians, 11 motor vehicle crashes or collisions, zero mountain rescues, zero ocean rescues, and one hazardous materials incident. A fire safety tip and announcement for the month is the Honolulu Fire Department website announcement is that the Honolulu Fire Department is excited to announce the launch of two new public data tools on its official website at fire.honolulu.gov. The Incident Trend Dashboard and the Fire Response Search Tool. The Incident Trend Dashboard gives residents easy access to five years of emergency data by neighborhood, including fire, rescue, medical, and hazardous materials incidents. With interactive maps and charts, the dashboard helps communities better understand emergency trends in their areas. The Fire Response Search Tool replaces the previous response mapping tool, which is no longer supported and was recently taken offline. This tool enables individuals and entities to look up specific emergency incidents in which they have an interest in or may have been involved in or affected by. This tool enhances transparency and provides residents with efficient and direct access to incidents in a secure and accessible format. Developed by the Honolulu Fire Department's Planning and Development Division with the help of, from a city and county of Honolulu, Okeala Fellow's intern, these data tools reflect our ongoing commitment to transparency, innovation, and community engagement. To access these tools, please visit fire.honolulu.gov/news-and-info. There any questions?
All of Board Members, are there any questions regarding the emergency incidents and statistics of our region or the safety fire tips or the new handy dandy resource online? Dr. Dudley? Dr. Dudley, may you please use your microphone? Thank you.
The first is this one. The first of the things that you mentioned, the new things, could you tell us the name of it again and how to find it?
Yeah, it's, well, it's on the fire.honolulu.gov. That's the website. And if you's on the very top, the banner on the right, you'll see news and info. You click that and it'll pop up Incident Trend Dashboard, Fire Response Search Tools.
Any other questions from our Board Members? Any questions or concerns from the community at large? Great, thank you so much. Appreciate the good work. We look forward to checking out that new resource online at fire.honolulu.gov. Hey, let's welcome up Honolulu Police Department. They're online, joining us via WebEx this evening.
Hi, good evening, Board. Corporal Corey Macchino. Kapole the community policing team online. We also have Sergeant Fumi Maroka and Lieutenant Marino Correa. What are statistics for the month of May? Motor vehicle thefts, we had 28 in the district, we had 11 in Kapole. Burglaries was 14 in our district, five in Kapole. Thefts was 136 and 67 in Kapole. Unauthorized entries into motor vehicle, we had 25 in the district and 16 in Kapole. Speeding or traffic citations, speeding, we had 10. Moving violations was 398. Parking violations was 102. Total traffic citations was 510. Total calls for service for the district was 7,735. And total calls for Kapole was 2,614. And open to any questions, comments, or concerns.
Mahalo for the report. Are there any questions from the Board on the crime incidents and statistics or prevention and safety tips? Chair recognizes Board Member Nick Ferrera.
Okay, I see a lot of complaints on social media about parking, especially in lower Makakilo. And then going up Makakilo Drive, I see vans and pickup trucks up by the last traffic light and was wondering, is that being enforced at all or does it take a call to 311 to get those things addressed?
Um, yeah, so the patrol officers, they hardly actually go around due to the number of calls that we have. But the 311 and just making a 911 non-emergency calls, the officers can respond. And we also address the nuisance complaint online for the parking. So, um, yeah, we encourage everybody to just make the 311 or the calls to 911 for the parking.
So do you guys still have the, I don't know if they're community policing people or the ones that have the magnetic thing on their door? Or there used to be somebody that used to go around that would put abandoned vehicle on parked cars. And I think that's maybe separate from your department, but are they still doing that?
Yeah, so it's a badly vehicles for the city, but what you can do is you can still call 911 on non-emergency and just report the abandoned vehicle. The officers can cite it, mark the tires, and then they'll input it into the system for the abandoned vehicles.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from Board Members? Any questions, comments, or concerns for HPD from the community at large?
Hey, it's Dan. Quick question. On theft, on theft, does that include any instances of identity theft? And does HPD cover any of those types of complaints?
Um, identity theft, um, no, unfortunately, that's a separate category itself. I don't have the actual identity theft. It falls under the financial crimes statistics, and I don't have those numbers right now.
Mahalo. Any other questions, comments, or concerns from the community at large? Seeing none, thank you very much. HPD appreciate the service.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Do we have Board of Water Supply with us online? Okay, we'll circle back if they grace us with their presence. Otherwise, we thank them for working on the Red Hill water problems. And do we have Mayor Rick Langiardi's representative online?
Yes, hi. Can you hear me?
Okay.
Hi, Chief Suzuka, Mayor's Representative from the Department of Housing and Land Management. Good evening, Chair, Board Members. Let's see, I'll start off with the Skyline ridership. For the month of May, it was 99,971 riders. It's been pretty consistent. With respect to the homework that I was assigned, actually tonight, I believe in the gallery, Roy Miyahira from the Department of Community Services, who is the city's homeless coordinator, is there to answer questions related to Honu. And, um, and so I'm going to ask if it's okay that he give his report at the end of my homework responses. But in the meantime, let me just kind of quickly go through the responses that I received from various city agencies with respect to the questions that you posed from last month. So the first one was with respect to Honu, and so I'm going to skip that for a second. And the second question related to the, any possible calming solutions and for the Makakilo Drive traffic situation. And the question was posed to DTS. I'm told that DTS reached out to Board Member Ferreira and Chair Paris directly. I'm not privy to what the result of those that reach out was, so I'm going to have to defer there. But that's my understanding. The third homework that I had related to, actually, I thought it was a pretty interesting question. It related first to feeder routes. Because of feeder routes to connect the bus with Skyline. And then the other question that I found interesting was related to the capacity of the buses to accommodate luggage. And so with respect to the feeder route question, the response from DTS was that bus riders in the Makakilo-Kapole-Honokai Hale area may continue to utilize feeder routes to connect with Skyline stations for the upcoming future. Route 416, which is the Kapole Circulator, Route 461, Makakilo, Palahia, UH West Oahu, Route 44, Keone Nai, UH West Oahu, and Oa Hua in I West La, Route 46, Kapole Commons, UH West Oahu, and Route 47, Keone Nai, UH West Oahu, Ever Beach. With respect to the luggage question, DTS has recently acquired new articulated bus that have space for luggage with some service. DTS is looking into acquiring more buses with specifications that would accommodate passengers with luggage in the future. The next question was relating to speed trailers and whether or not, the question was posed by Board Member Ferrera, whether HPD could place speed trailers that can record speed data and conduct speed enforcement along Makakilo Drive. What is the traffic citation history for Makakilo Drive? And the, I was told that the HPD extension for, to respond to this item, and they'll get back to us in the next month's report. The last question related to, it was relating to the Wahipana projects under Moka. And the question was, what projects does Moka have a plan to have in the Kapole area? And Moka's response is, one site in Kapole, Kahue Point Beach Park, will be featured in the Wahipana project. The location is part of Wahipana's Phase 3 activations and is expected to open in winter 2025. Other sites in Phase 3 include the Ho'ohu Malahia Botanical Garden, Haleiva Beach Park, and Chinatown Gateway Plaza. Why don't, if it's okay if Roy Miyahira could report on the questions related to Honu and the homeless situation? And then I'm going to be standing by to receive any questions that you may have.
That sounds fine. Well, welcome up.
Thank you. Good evening, Chair and Members. My name is Roy Miyahira, Director of Homeless Solutions for the City and County of Honolulu. I started in February. Part of my background is born and raised here in Honolulu, Hawaii. I was in the mainland for about 35 years, working in corporate environment, and wanted to come home. I want to come home, take care of my loved ones, and also deliver what I know from the mainland, my business, back to our town. I'm here to discuss the Honu question, and I guess I will read the question. It's more about residents ask for more details about Honu's 60% placement and why the cost per person is $290 approximately, $290 per month. Can the city work with the state nonprofit organizations or other organizations to reduce the operation cost of Honu? It's a good question. How much longer will Honu operate in Kapole? That's one thing I can answer right now. As you can see, they vacated a lot in our city spot. It is now at the old stadium after a very successful stint here in Kapole. Then Honu provides social security and identification card services. That should be note to that. There is a social security building, I believe, in downtown that provides that for our citizens. And Resident Twiloma asked if DCS, Department of Community Services, can provide the recidivism percentage on individuals' families that stay housed after two years. I will answer that afterwards. The question that was posed mostly about Honu can be answered in many different ways. And there were two or three iterations before we got to the final one inside of that. Honu serves as the only emergency shelter on the island that provides 24/7 intake. Now, there are going to be some providers out there, great facilities that offer 24/7 service. But as far as intake, there's a certain range of time which to do so. As you've seen here at Kapole and Kapole, it is all hours of the day that we receive folks who are in need of shelter. That is one big difference. It is also intentionally designed to be more mobile with the capability of being placed in areas where there is a concentration of individuals experiencing homelessness. So we do our homework to understand as to where the great need is, where the demand is, where we feel that we have the biggest effect, not only for the folks who are there, but also on the community members. So they understand that we are building safety, we're building confidence. We're also talking to our commercial people about how we know you're going to be able to flourish in your businesses if we're able to gather those who are in need and help them through their process. It is aligned with the city's homeless strategy of getting those on the street to engage the system, which is probably one of the most difficult parts of those who are out in the street and having to trust now a system that some of them felt that abandoned them, but now they need to seek help. Our job is to enforce them to trust us to go back to our system. And then having resources available to keep them off the streets. So Honu is one resource, just one resource that the city offers where we can help them and place them after stabilization into their next level of housing. It could not be, well, may not be a permanent housing, but it's probably a next form of gaining some type of traction on where you want to live. And establishing maybe a workplace, establishing your skills, stabilizing your family, putting them in the right schools. It's just one path of getting there. Part of our strategy that's aligned with our sitting county is what we call beds of many flavors. Beds of many flavors is talking about identifying specific needs of an individual. Because as you would think, as traumatizing their homelessness is, there are going to be many difficult situations that someone might go through. It could be economic, it could be a substance abuse disorder, it could be a mental illness. There are so many. But beds of many flavors in that strategy, we're able to identify those, what they have, and try to suit their needs in forms of what type of bed. We're not opposed to put everyone with the housing first model. That has worked. But we feel there's been some type of enhancement in finding a place for a specific type of illnesses or needs in some of our facilities that we have now. And those navigation centers are in the west, are in metro area, and go as far as maybe Diamond Head. For instance, we have US Best, we have the Wine Eye comprehensive. We have another spot, US Best in Barbers Point. We can go back into town with our EVLA Center where they have at least four facilities that serve different types of needs, whether it's mental illness or folks who just need a respite, they get cleaned up, feel good about themselves for an hour or two, and then go back to their, maybe their jobs or their way of living. The annual cost to operate Honu each year is $2.7 million and services on averages, on the average of 580 people per year. Now, our capacity is 40 beds or 40 tents in Honu on the property. But we are destined, or actually, we're motivated to turn these type of tents so people are able to pass through and get to their next spot. That's why I have almost 600 people who pass through Honu. So this results in a per-person cost of $390 per month. The 24/7 mobile nature of the program does attribute to the operating cost of the program, but generates a return as it is leveraged against other service provider resources. Other shelters do not have the staff intake of 24/7, and they don't have the service providers that can direct folks to Honu at all hours and concentrate their efforts when Honu is present in their community. Meaning that even our service providers can use Honu as a rest spot if it doesn't work out in their facilities. Honu also had good success rate in moving folks from shelter to other locations. And specifically in Kapole, we had a placement rate, meaning going from the Honu shelter to their next step of shelter at a 60% placement rate. Now, Honu has been in existence for two to three years, so we don't have a lot of data. By getting to the point of having 60% placement rate ranks as a high number throughout the country when you look at emergency type of shelters. The one item I'm going to address that was very difficult in researching was a question about individual families that stay housed after two years. When do they return back, unfortunately, to a homeless experience? And the number after six months is all I could gather is about 5% of these households return to homeless experience after being in permanent housing, which is, again, a terrific number to see that they've gone through the system. Permanent housing has probably gained some traction, and through some unfortunate incident, 5% maybe go back into the homeless situation. Excuse me. I think that, as I said maybe before, Doctor, there could be a socioeconomic type of situation. It could be, again, a return to some type of substance abuse or use disorder, possible onset of mental illness due to medications not working properly, not using their medications. I think we have the same type of answers to why people start in homeless situations. It may be kind of a return back to it once they've been in the system. Thank you for the question.
So we return now to the Deputy Director Suzuka to, and with our colleague here in person from Honu for questions. Are there any questions, comments, or concerns from the Board Members for the Mayor's Representative and the Honu Representative? Chair recognizes.
Thank you. This is for our Honu Representative. Thank you for your presentation. I was just wondering if you can speak a little more on how the Honu location is decided? You said it's moving to the old stadium, and selfishly, I want to keep Honu for our community, but I understand the need that we have in our island and that you are mobile and need to move. However, we have the largest homeless encampment in the world out by the Wine Eye Boat Harbor. So I'm wondering why it's moving to the old stadium instead of further out on the leeward coast where we have huge concentration of houseless community members? That's my first question, please.
So, yes, we are at the old stadium in town and did see a month or two here being in Kapole that there would be a need to return to that, to that area. We're not dismissing any of the other areas that are in need or raising their hand and seeing that there are encampments, whether Sumakapu or the Wine Eye area. I was not here in place in my position by speaking with our DCS, Department of Community Services. There was a lot of outreach to the Nanukuli side to to welcome Honu. And I believe this was last year. I'm not saying that, obviously, I think we're doing wonders, you know, seeing how we are now, because we've always made improvements in the third, fourth, fifth round. But we're always open to knowing as to where we need to be. Where we want to be, we don't really think about that. Where we need to be is important. So I will definitely take your note back and seek more guidance or where we should be next. But thank you for your comment.
Thank you. And then my other question was, you had said that 600 Thank you. And then my other question was, you had said that 600 people passed through the Honu system. I'm wondering how many, if you know how many were in Kapole? If all 600 were here or if it was split?
Residents, former residents of that, this area? If I remember, and I'll get the number for you, I believe it was about 20% from just this district, whether it's Makakilo to close up to Wine Eye, Makaha to probably close to Pearl City, it counted about 20%, which is interesting. And that we still try to move people from wherever they are, whether it's Waikiki, Huaikei, or Pearl City. We try to find them a place to go, and they're willing to go this far to lay their head down and stabilize.
Thank you. And as a board, if you do homework, you can give it to Mr. Suzuki. We would, or Suzuki, we would appreciate, but knowing, letting our board know how the location of Honu is, the future locations are decided, that would be really wonderful.
Okay, well, there's some criteria behind it.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay.
Chair recognizes board member Ferrera.
Hi there. Thank you so much for your presentation. I'm married to a Quest outreach member. And as we know, Quest is provided by HMSA, United Healthcare, and many others. And when Honu came to Kapole, there was some frustration because they couldn't get through to the phone number for whoever runs it, and they got voicemail and no return calls. That's one. The second one was because you had social security, you had DMV, you had, it was the perfect place to take in homeless people and be able to get them an ID, be able to get them their social security card and all that. And it was a total frustration for them. And plus, it was never full. It was like, you know, one way or the another. And it just, once they left, you were still left with people who didn't get served. So I don't know how it was way out on the west coast, I mean, way out on the west coast, but that's the frustration that I got from one outreach worker from United Healthcare. HMSA was another one. Well, Kaiser doesn't really participate in it, but they don't even bother. It was frustrating. And so now, and they, and they didn't even have COR out here, those ambulances for people, you know, who are having a hard time mentally. But you have them out at Puck's Alley where they have the new one. So as usual, the west side gets kind of the short end of the stick. And in town, you know, they get full service. I don't know if these people are able to get all of the services they need, but it was incredibly disappointing that they, they couldn't get through. There's still no license, no birth certificate, no social security, no one helped them pay. That was the other thing too, because they could go to these places and there was no funding for them to pay for what they needed. You know, it's like you need a driver's license, you need so many dollars, you need that. So I'm just, I'm baffled that we didn't really get everything we needed. And now going back to town, it's, you know, all good again.
Member Ferrera.
And we, and we need a contact number, a direct contact number for whoever runs it?
So I can bring somebody to them.
So, yeah, so these care providers can bring somebody to them because you're not getting that either.
Yes, sir. I can answer that, your comment, one way. I'd like to know a little bit more about, about it. Maybe you can just email me your, your question. There is a phone number that you can, you can call. However, we're going to a bigger and better type of system using new technology. And that our folks from COR are partners at HPD. Some of our partners and service providers are now able to direct or influence folks who are experiencing homelessness and put them in what we call like a hotel reservation type of system, find out what's available, first of all, at Honu, that's where we're testing it at, and determine whether there is room here. So if there's no room, of course, you can't deliver someone to Honu. But there's normally some availability. Now, that's where we're going to start. Where we're going to end is having all our service providers on the system, like a hotel system, and knowing there are bed availability every day. And as I said, there'll be specific types of beds because everyone has specific needs. So that, that use of a system is just like how we use it maybe in booking a hotel. We'll know availability, we'll know where to put people in the right spot, and we'll be able to get them expeditiously. I think that will cut out a lot of the phone calls and the frustration that you can't reach somebody or, or the text messages, we'll be able to rely on a system where you can trust that our first responders are delivering these folks to the right spot. Again, hoping you're answering part of the question.
No, 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 I appreciate it. No, I really appreciate it, but we have a lot of resident homeless people that when the police department was booking people here and then letting them go, they found out that, hey, Kapole is not a bad place because, you know, we don't get hassled. And then I have another board member like Mickey Ala, who has a place that's a, it's a, I don't know how to pronounce it, but anyway, Halau. And was, is, it has continued to be, you know, totally bombarded by them. And so there were people who would take advantage of the service, but then there were others who are just kind of like free range homeless. And I know you can't do anything about that, and I really appreciate the fact that there is a Honu. But there, I guess, some of the people who tried to take advantage of the service and accompanied by their outreach people, you know, through Quest, it, it just didn't work out. And for as much as it's being paid for this program, I, I know, I know it's a work in progress and, and I don't, I don't knock it at all. I really don't. And it's just something that can, I guess, improve over time. And I don't mean to kind of knock you, but it's, you know, homeless people are a really tough group. And I just, I don't know, I just kind of expected more. But then it was just the really simple stuff that seemed like it didn't quite work. And that's just my feedback, so you guys kind of know how to improve it. Is that positive enough?
No, I'm going to take the silver lining from it. Again, what, welcome your thoughts and solutions that you're thinking of.
No, I totally, I totally support it because it's better than nothing. And I think because of the fact that where it was located, that there were places that they had to go to get what they needed, and maybe the funding wasn't there to pay for it, for them to get it, I'm not sure. I have to rely on my little group of women here who do outreach. So, you know, I'm just speaking through them.
I appreciate that.
Yeah.
Thank you very much, Board Member Ferrera. Appreciate it. Any other question, comments, or concerns for the mayor's office or the Honu representative with us this evening? Chair recognizes Second Vice Chair Dr. Kiyoni Dudley.
I just want to say that, you know, it was great having you folks here. It really, really was. And you all come back down.
Thank you. Pleasure to be here.
Any question, comments, or concerns for the mayor's office or Honu representative from the community at large?
Hello, I'm Carol, Carol England, and I have a couple of questions for you. So you said 580 people were, went through Honu, and you said 20% was from Kapole. So I did a little bit of math, it's 116 people, give or take. And my question is, how many, how many people that came to Honu that was actually refused services based on whatever your criteria is? A few years ago, when I was on the streets, I'm with the Radical Halle, I got refused, my clients were refused, and it was basically for whatever reasons at the time. But that was before the city took over, okay? And then a number of people being admitted and then walking off the program without really being placed anywhere. That's the data that I would like also. Okay, sorry. So which part did you not hear? The number of people that were admitted and did not leave, and that did leave and did not receive any of the full services, and the number that was actually turned away.
Thank you for your question. Just, just a couple corrections. So I think I mentioned 20%, around 20%, not just from Kapole, but, but from an area, I call it a region, from Makaha, maybe close to Pearl City, wherever this district ends. So again, I think a smaller number than I expected is coming in new as far as the number of people who were turned away. Now, now Honu is a volunteer program. Secondly, is when you're here, you are asked to engage in placement services. We're here to get better and move to our next step, improve yourself. At times, you're going to be turned away, you know, just based on perhaps your behavior at the outset when you get there, as we would think for any type of facility. It's something that we probably are not able to control from HPD standpoint. We don't have clinicians on board, but we normally help people by driving them back to what we found out. So we give them that transportation. There's another reason why if you don't follow the rules. We all have rules about curfews and behavior and not going back to your vices that you thought you could use while you're at Honu. This is a metric we haven't even used yet, but I want to use in the future in that 27% of those folks have been refused. 27, 27%. 27% of the people that were, that were through Honu, 580 people, 27%. Didn't last a certain point in time. I don't have that number, it might be about two, three weeks. Not refused, but self-exited, we'll call it. All right. Yes. I don't have it, but I'll look for it for you, okay? And this is during the time we're at Honu or a severe, during, Honu at Kapole? Kapole, all right. I'll find that out for you.
Mahalo. Sure, and when you speak, speak into the microphone because everyone can hear you then, including the person that you're addressing the question to, which should be me, by the way.
Sorry.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have the 28%. Now, if you look at those numbers, if they, if they get turned away, 28% of that numbers, that's still a $2.7 million project. So actually, you're serving less people because they're turned away for whatever reasons. This is what I wanted to know. Because it is an expensive project, you do not pay for any kind of ID. And, you know, Mr. Ferrera has his wife who works for Quest, and she's out on the streets. I totally get what she's going through. So you have no funding for IDs, which is $40. You have no, no money for birth certificates, which is about $8 to $12. And it's a $2.7 million program. And you're servicing 116 people here in Kapole. So when you do the math, it's pretty expensive. And so I can see where we're kind of still going, well, what is it that you do?
But just to clarify, what was the question in that?
So he said 28% they turn away, or they refuse services?
Yes.
Yes.
I understand the logic that you're bringing out. I'm asking you, please clarify your question, so he can answer the question. Thank you.
So my question was, so 28% out of the 118 that comes through from Kapole got turned away last year?
So if you don't mind, I'm going to make a correction. So 27% of the folks who came to Kapole Honu self-exited. I will find the number for you that was, that were refused. I'll find that number.
Honu representative, also, since we're talking about numbers, can you clarify what is the annual budget for Honu and what was spent for Kapole?
So every year, the state funds this operation. I believe it was $2.7 million last year, last fiscal year. As far as this new fiscal year, I'm not sure what that is, but I can find that number for you. My guess is always that their expenses will be just a little bit more, you know, based on maybe just normal costs. I wouldn't say maybe some of it's inflation. But again, we have protection there, whether it was here in Kapole in a 24/7 type of mode. And now this comes expensive, and then this comes cheap, of course, when we have our HPD folks here 24 hours a day on top of the staff that we need, that need to be probably spelled once in a while. But I will find that number out for you, Chair.
Thank you. I think it would be helpful in context that your annual budget for the entire island was $2.7 billion last year. And Kapole, Honu's time here only made up a portion of that. So it would be good to have it in context. We had another community member wanting to raise questions. Come on, Ante. Come on, Nana.
I live up on the hill, and I'm the noisy one. Okay, for, I'm going to make a comment. I used to work for nonprofits, so I do a lot of this kind of stuff. First of all, you have to remember that his program is dependent on infrastructure support, water, medical, transportation. So $2.7 million, and he's only part of it, is actually very small. Now, one of the reasons they go back into town is they're dependent on the infrastructure support. If you can't get cell phone service, if you can't do Wi-Fi on the computer, then you can't get your documents processed, and that's part of the problem. Now statistically, how many of these people that he served were family groups? How many were elderly? Because we have a lot of disenfranchised elderly. They can't afford anything, and suddenly a group home or whatever their income is, is shut off. How many were homeless because of the loss of their job? Because, say, they were a waiter and suddenly their shop, their small little shop closed. How many were family groups? How many were released from incarceration? They do need their documentation. They can't do anything without it. Can't even get a bus pass, really. So if nobody pays for it, these people cannot enter into society comfortably. How many of them were not American citizens? In other words, they didn't have a green card or they couldn't prove they had a green card. Without a birth certificate, you don't know if you're Micronesian, you're a foreigner that was married and suddenly abandoned by your spouse, and you don't have your documentation. And if you're a victim of a fire, for instance, or somebody on illegal entry into your vehicle who took all your documentation plus your car, you can't prove who you are. So again, without the funding, everything kind of stops. So $2.7 million is really quite cheap. Some companies spend that much on mailing. So I'd like to support, gentlemen. Honu is probably one of the first steps that we need to start taking. And I mean, can you imagine trying to talk to somebody who needs a bath? And you don't have running water in one of these shelters. He can't sleep in the shelter. So again, he might have had to move to Kapole. And remember, once upon a time, we were nothing but pineapple fields and sugar cane with no running water. So I just want to make that comment, but I think we So I just want to make that comment, but I think we need more statistics and they need more time. Thank you.
Mahalo, anti. Did you have a particular question that you wanted to? No worries, you get about forty five more seconds for your three minutes, so.
To tell you a joke, um, well, I really would like to know some more statistics and how it's kept. Um, particularly into the documentation and such things as incarcerations, family groups. And the ages of the people you're serving, which means somebody's got to be sitting there doing a lot of. Tiki taki work that you have to pay for.
Mahalo, thank you. And it's been noted that the statistical information that is what we're hearing community members and board members wanting. Okay, um, board member Mick Ferrar, any additional questions that haven't been mentioned so far?
Yeah, this will be my last one. Um. Some of the people that weren't admitted to the one in Kapole were people that were disabled, like in wheelchairs. And we could kind of understand that because it was in kind of a dirt pit, but they got turned away. And these are people who obviously are, you know, victims of um. You know, they get amputations due to diabetes and things like that. And then another one was somebody who was a victim of the fire um, in Maui. And their money was running out for rent assistance and she was coming there with a small child and was told, well, until you. End up losing all of that, then you know, come back and see us. And to me, that seemed kind of tragic. Um, but I'm not asking a question, I'm just putting it out there that some of the people are getting turned away. It weren't necessarily drug addicts. And some of them were victims of fire. And I know as we get this program up and running, that maybe we can ask for more funding. So that, you know, we can, you know, pay for things like IDs and birth certificates. And some people who have unusual circumstances and and that type of thing, but I wanted to put it out there in the public because. You know, it's a good program, but I think we can improve it. And I was kind of shocked to know that there's a few people that are being turned away. And Kapole wasn't really, I don't think it was completely full. Oh, it was. Okay, so yeah, it was full, but when we went there, it it kind of looked deserted, but. I don't know. I think it's it's a good program and we can um, probably advocate for. Designating more money or using the money that we're getting to expand it more. And that's all I got to say.
Thank you, member Ferrar, those ideas we can bring up on the future board items. Any final comments, questions, or concerns from the community members at large? For the mayor or the Honu representative? Hearing none, you all have your homework and we look forward to hearing from you in person or passed on through the mayor's um, representative next time. Mahalo. Now let's go to. Next on our agenda is Hawaii Department of Transportation. Each dot, Hawaii Department of Transportation. Now let's go to Ompo. Uncle Frank, are you available and with us on WebEx tonight?
Uh, yes, Frank Ginaudio. At at the June Citizen Advisory Committee, or CAC, meeting. Ompo Executive Director Mark Garrity reported that the Policy Board Chair Representative Darius Keela. Met with federal officials in Washington DC. In response to my question, he stated that the makeup of the board will change in January twenty twenty six. Transportation Improvement Program Revision Five, primarily concerned with bridges maintenance, was approved by the CAC. Uh, Kiana Otsuka of Ompo and Max Calhammer of the Department of Transportation Services, or DTS. Briefed on the Employees Traffic Demand Management Study. It collected information on state and local government employees commuting. That included vehicle miles traveled or VMT, use of transit, parking and other factors. The study's goals are to improve employee retention through means such as subsidizing transit and parking costs. Share parking and legislative measures. Incentives will be used to reduce VMT and encourage transit use. Uh, the CAC members discussion mentioned safety, education on how to reduce driving and the potential use of congestion par pricing. In the open forum, CAC member David Donald Sakamoto criticized the poor location of the Skyline Station. At the airport and the possible need for shuttle to the terminals for impaired people such as the blind. Uh, Dan Smith mentioned the need for second accesses, including his area in Pearl City. Uh, following the meeting, I advised Director Garrity by email. That the city will fund an environmental assessment or EA for the completion of Makakila Drive. And that he should coordinate the EA's development with city officials. He replied that he would discuss the mo- move with DTS Director Roger Morton. At the ten June meeting of the three thousand six hundred plus member Palihua Community Association. Its new Board of Directors approved my request to submit a letter for near term completion of Makakila Drive. To Mayor Rick Blangiardi and Director Morton with copy to Councilmember Andrea Topola. I later provided a draft of the letter for the association's consideration. Uh, let me close by volunteering to continue serving on the board's transportation committee. If so designated by the new board and committee chairs. Mahalo.
Mahalo, Uncle Frank, for your diligence and your service and your willingness to continue the work. Are there any comments, questions, or concerns from board members on the Ompo report? Any question, comments, or concerns from the community at large? Okay, hearing none. Let's now move to the newly added agenda items. For today, on the permitted interaction group reports from the October twenty twenty four. Um, PIGs, the PUA, that were established in order to address the issues of transportation safety. School overcrowding and Kalailoa Community Development District and. Community Resiliency Hubs in the Eva region. At this time, we have received no reports from all of the. What are groups, although conversations have been had, no official filings have been submitted. Except for one from the Community Resiliency Hub permitted interaction group. The detailed report is available on the Google Drive. Um, and I will provide a summary of their findings and recommendations at this time. Although the board will not take any action as we're just going to hear what their pertinent findings and recommendations are. The first finding, um, the determined and a working definition, um, clarification of what community resiliency hubs is. And created a framework for resiliency ecosystem um, across the region. They identified regional challenges, including climate change vulnerability, lack of disaster preparedness. Um, increasing global supply chain disruptions have disastrous effects on us. Food insecurity and highlighted the lack of category three, four, or five hurricane shelters. Or any other disaster shelters really uh, in our region. They have coordinated with Serene, which is the Community Resiliency Hubs Initiative um, at Kapialali Community. College and in concert with the City and County of Honolulu Office of Climate Change Sustainability and Resilience. They've identified potential partner with Viren Hawaii, a nonprofit that coordinates community resiliency hubs across Hawaii Island. And they've identified existing community resources in our region. Including a number of nonprofits, including those three that are doing food bank distributions. Seventeen public and private elementary and high schools and the University of Hawaii West Oahu campus. And they recognize that neighborhood watches play a vital role of security in our community. And they acknowledge that homeowner associations like the Village of Kapole. Is moving forward with trying to train their people at a community level for disaster preparedness communication. Now to the fun stuff, some of the recommendations there of the PIG. One is to continue development of community resiliency hubs. So by promoting the establishment of these hubs, including from the twenty twenty three community um, survey. That where they would view community members in twenty twenty three. Selected nine sites across the region in which they would have confidence showing up as a place for a resiliency hub. One of those sites um, that actually responded and positively parked the Hawaii Agriculture Research Center. Up in the Kunia area and they said, we'd love to actually make this happen. So their board of directors were happy to um. To announce that they are moving towards becoming a resiliency hub. The second is they encourage support of Volca in doing, becoming a neighborhood level resiliency hub. Given that they're already working on certain resiliency efforts and they encourage the University of West Oahu to be our regional resiliency hub. Considering they already have a a plan for disaster preparedness. Some of the final recommendations is policies is towards the fact that we just don't need one place. We need an ecosystem. We need a community of resiliency things. So. They're encouraging policies on in-house enhanced shelter preparedness. Um, and asking the neighborhood boards to consider requesting incorporation of safe rooms in new home developments across the region. And recommending requesting the city to consider um, placing and mandating safe rooms in new developments. So people have a safe place to go because no more category two, three, or four, or five hurricane shelters. They also recommend a certain food security and sustainability initiatives, including supporting more community gardens. Um, also naming Pu'O Kapole as a designated community garden in specific at our regional park. Encouraging um, the use of front yards for urban agriculture. So instead of just having green lawns. Um, to have places where we can actually grow food. I'm also encouraging new housing developments to either incorporate. Resiliency hubs into their master plan designs when they are creating all of these new affordable homes. Or at least significant elements, including water catchment system, off grid or solar wind power generations. Food landscapes, wine landscapes and circoscapes, so. And finally, their recommendations on community engagement is. Supporting the establishment of a clearinghouse for resiliency hub and disaster preparedness efforts. Encouraging interested individuals, so those people that want to champion this kind of work. To register with the Oahu Resiliency Hub Learning Community. And if you want more information on that, reach out to the neighborhood board and we can connect you. And they recommend board members to obtain business cards because they found when they went around talking to people, they were looking at us like we were strange. Um, people because we're like, we're at the neighborhood board and they were like, uh, who are you and why are you here and why are you talking about this community hub nonsense? So our encouragement is get those official business cards so you're not just. Somebody, you're an elected city neighborhood board member doing work on behalf of our community. And finally, um, the recommendation from the permitted interaction group is that um, the permitted interaction group. Um, be reconstituted and new members be assigned as early as next month. Because having a permitted interaction group allowed for really good communication without. Having to run afoul of the sunshine law and all of the red tape in having our board members meet with other boards. City, government, and community leaders to work through this. So that is in brief, you can find all of the details in their online report. With that, uh, are there any questions, comments, or concerns on the PIG reports? Seeing none, the chair recognizes that um, this will complete all of the permitted interactions groups. Established in October of twenty twenty four and we have some good material moving forward. Now let's go to public input and let's welcome up our community members, um, any of them. And we ask that our elected officials hold off until our community members have spoken first. So any community member have anything to share with us? You got three minutes. Come on up. We'll start in person and then we'll alternate uh, to those online and then go back and forth.
Hi, uh, my name is uh, Daphne Westcott and I live in the villages of Kapole. I'm a community member and um, I'm here again to talk about graffiti. Uh, in the villages of Kapole, we take care of our own graffiti. But uh, I noticed around the Fort Barrett area. Uh, Fort Barrett itself is owned by the city and county. It's leased to the archery club. It has not been extensively used since twenty twelve. It's maybe used on the weekends by ten to twenty people, so most of us don't have access to that area. Uh, it seems like a travesty to me because we could develop it as a walking park if they're not going to use it and they're not there. They're given the the lease there if they maintained it, but they're clearly not maintaining it. They used to. Like you'd see graffiti and a few days later it would be gone. But there are those massive graffitis around at that park area and they haven't done anything to get rid of it. And I complained about this, I think, two meetings ago. And maybe it was three meetings since I was out of town for a while, but um. I think that this is kind of important. I mean, they, the area is fenced but has lots of holes, so there are people. Homeless people residing in there. There is a lot of, they haven't been maintaining the areas for archery. I mean, you'd think you'd see some mowed areas where they're shooting at their targets, but nothing like that. And um, the city and county has allowed this to happen and I'm not sure who's responsible for it with the city and county, but. I mean, and that's not the only graffiti in our community. There are these boxes, uh, gray boxes that uh, monitor the the lights. And those boxes are just covered in graffiti all through this area. Around the public library, behind the public library, there's one of those gray boxes. I don't know if it, it doesn't belong to the library because they're not allowed to touch it. And it has been covered for the last five years. And I have complained about it before, but nothing's been done about it. So I don't, do we really want to have um. Uh, an area in Kapole which, you know, we where we don't paint out the graffiti when it starts, when it starts happening? Or do we and, or do we want to let it deteriorate and then have crime go up? Because everybody knows the studies show that a community that takes care of its graffiti and and trash. Uh, is, has less crime. And so I think, you know, we live in this community and I just can't believe that we haven't done something, maybe get artists interested in it. I mean, I traveled around in New Zealand and all those power boxes, instead of just painting them out, like it's just atrocious along here. Someone's just taken some white paint and just covered it up, the graffiti, and it makes it actually look worse. I mean, we really need to find some artists and and have them make the boxes look nice. Because that's what they've done in New Zealand and it's amazing in the communities. I I drove through a lot of communities. And they they've done that to to stop the graffiti. And I think that we could do it too, but I just hate that our community is going down with graffiti everywhere. And summertime, what do they do? There's, as soon as the school's out, there's more graffiti. You paint it out, they're less likely to do it again.
Mahalo, community member for raising the concerns over graffiti. Uh, for those that see vandalism, um, please contact the appropriate officials, particularly for villages of Kapole. Since they're still under dispute uh, for the road. particularly for villages of Kapole, since they're still under dispute for the road transfers. Please contact H H F T C. And if you need help with getting in contact, please reach out to the neighborhood board whenever you see that. Or you can contact Volca particularly, and they will handle. Regarding vandalism largely, I do know that we have our council member here. And they have been quite successful in other areas of our community, particularly in Nanakuli, where they have done murals. So I do know that the city has a particular way for artists and community members to sponsor creation of art in public spaces. So we may consider moving that forward and having a wonderful discussion at our neighborhood board about what we would like to see. So community members, if you would like to sponsor murals, please help us get resources so we can help you work with the council member to make that happen. Okay. Come on up for online. I saw it's going back and forth. So Naomi Kukak. Or did?
Can everybody hear me? Can anybody hear me? Am I connected? Okay, sorry. I just wanted to make sure. Thank you very much. Well, hello, good everybody. Good evening, Chair, all of our, the board members and community members. My name is Naomi Kukat Callahan. I'm here from Simon Pietri Enterprises, just popping in to give a really quick update on our Aloha Carbon project. And for those of us, or for those of you who are not familiar with who we are and what we do, or if this is your first time hearing about us, need a refresher. Simon Pietri Enterprises is a locally owned research and technology development company that is working on the Aloha Carbon Waste Diversion and Recycling Project, which is going to be located in Kapole in the James Campbell Industrial Park. Our project is working to recycle various forms of waste with little to no reuse value currently, like construction and demolition waste, mixed tropical green waste, particularly waste that's containing invasive pests like coconut rhinoceros beetle and wildfire prone invasive plants that are very prominent on our west side and are more of a concern particularly during these hotter summer months. So what we are doing is we're taking those wastes and transforming them into a variety of products like renewable fuels, locally made fertilizer, fertilizers, and maybe even some recycled building materials down the road. But my update pertains specifically to the Aloha Sustainable Materials Recycling and Fertilizer Facility, or SMURF, which we call it for short, which will serve as the pilot and the introduction plan to the Aloha Carbon project. So in February of this year, the final environmental assessment for the SMURF, which received 100% positive comments from the community, was officially accepted by our reviewing agency and has also been published. And a physical copy is now available and housed at the Hawaii State Library as well. So next up for us is the very fun and exciting permitting process. So we're currently working on putting together our conditional use permit and our solid waste management permits. And as we get closer to completing that process, we do of course come, plan to come back to the neighborhood board, give an official presentation with any updates that we have at that time. And as we did with the environmental assessment, we plan to humbly ask for another letter of support at that time. And that's my update in a nutshell.
Mahalo, Naomi, and the good work you are doing with Simon Pietri and Aloha Carbon. Any questions, comments or concerns? And we look forward to hearing your update. We really appreciate when those that have come and asked us for support show up routinely to share with us the progress of the projects. Really super. Hey, let's go now to someone in person.
Again, I'm Veronica Munikata. I live up in Makakilo. And if you go up that hill, which only has one exit, one entrance, you'll notice that the monkey bough trees and the median strips are very large. They've been there about 50 years. The branches are overhanging the street. And I'd like to know when they're going to start trimming them before the big blow comes and we don't have a way out. We've already had a couple of branches come down, but they've been cleaned up very nicely by some of the neighbors. But that's not the point. Some of these are really big and they are going across the street, reaching over to the sidewalk. So I'd like to have the city look at trimming them because they own that median strip. Thank you.
Mahalo, thank you. Let's go online for community members. That's break. Thad, you available?
There we go. Yeah, sorry. I couldn't figure out how to get unmuted. Good evening, everyone. I wanted to follow up on the comments made by a previous member of the public here about the graffiti. When I was on the board a few years ago, we had a committee, the committee was actually called A B C. The B stood for beautification, which was what I focused on. I mainly worked on getting, you know, advertising signs, like there's some now that say, you know, join the NFL, something or other, or I don't know, different signs that get put up, banners that get put up on some of the fences around here that, that don't belong. That was my main focus. I never tried to tackle graffiti. But what I discovered was that there's a whole network, a whole spider web that you have to negotiate when you try to get things like that done, like signs taken down. For example, if a sign is on a telephone pole, that's Hiko. If a sign is on the fence leading onto the freeway off Makakilo Drive, you see those banners put up there a lot. That's state property. If you see signs on the last fence coming down Makakilo Drive before you turn to go onto H1 towards Y and I, that's private property. So you have to talk to yet, yet a third person for that one. When I had the committee, I was able to connect with representatives from the city councilman's office. And Kathy, I apologize, I forget Kathy's last name. She worked for Senator Gabbard for a number of years. She was enormously helpful with me coordinating, getting some signs taken down. And the reason that I'm going into so much detail here, and I apologize for taking too much time, is that I would be more than happy to get that committee going again and pitching in and volunteering some time. I have the time. You know, I have the expertise, not saying I'm the only person who could do the job, but, but I'd love to step in and, and get that role going again and getting some stuff done. Unfortunately, I'm not a current board member, nor will I be a member when the new board takes, takes their positions next month. So somebody who is a sitting board member would have to officially chair that committee. I would be happy to be the vice chair and, you know, commit all my time to it and, and do the work. And, and I'm not looking for praise or accolades. I'm just looking to contribute. And I think that would be, I think that would work for everybody, really. And I'm, I'm happy to do it. So that's it. Thank you.
Mahalo, Thad Sprig for volunteering. And if anyone else wants to volunteer to help, please reach out to your board members. We will put you to work. Let's go to someone in person.
Hey, thank you, Chair Paris. My name is Scott Kumatsu and I'm with Grace Pacific. I'm just here for a quick update. I know I came here five, six times, I think, just to share what's going on. So we did get conditional approval for our permit. And they accepted all of the, our requests in that permit. The conditions that they had was of course to submit a new lighting plan, submit a new traffic flow plan within our quarry, just to minimize noise. And also finally, a new site plan, like where's everything going? All of these things been already submitted. The lighting and the traffic plan's been approved. We're just waiting on the site plan to, to be approved. And thank you for patience, you know, allowing me to come here and share with you what's going on in the community. I do have one more additional thing. One of the, we're, one of the new asphalt plans that we have that we're putting into the quarry, our previous amendment of 62 feet height variance, our new plan is 63 and nine inches. So it's a little taller. So we're going to have to go ahead and amend that and submit a new variance on our height. But once again, it's in the pit, the height's not really a big thing in the pit. So that, that's it for me. Thanks, guys.
Mahalo. Any question, comments or concerns? Thank you for the update. Really appreciate it. Let's go to Uncle Mike Gulyoj online. Then I see Uncle Mick afterwards.
Hi, I'm Michael Loyou. And what I'm calling about is that on Saturday, July 12th, House District 42 and 43 of the Democratic Party has decided to do something for the community and has to do a school supply drive. And so on that date, we'll be at Kapole Regional Park, accepting any school supplies for students or for the faculty. And we'll be there from 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. And the two schools we've picked out by working with people who work in the DOE are Makakila Elementary, Barber's Point Elementary. And depending on how much we receive, if we get plenty, then we have other schools we'll also give out too. But we just want to get that word out that we'll be out there on the 12th of July.
Mahalo. Thank you very much for the good work with getting school supplies for our teachers and Kiki. Let's go back in person. Uncle Tony Gaston.
Well, good evening, members of the board, members of the community. I'm Tony Gaston from the Hunt Companies. I just want to give you a quick project update and also say hi to Jeff. Good to see you. Okay. As you know, if you've driven over there, you've seen that, that last road that we got to build Copahai is doing very well now. If you take a look at this image up here, you can see, hey, it looks kind of like it's almost done. And guess what, gang? It is. I zoom in a little bit more and you can see all we need to do is pave it. If you were to drive out there now, you can even more so, they put the tack coat down because they're going to start paving the road tomorrow. That means tomorrow and Friday, yay. After all this time, we're going to be able to pave the road. So the only thing left to do after that is just the finishing work. Raise manhole covers and valve covers, put in the streetlights, put in things. So it'll still take another two to three months before we can officially open it. But the biggest obstacle is being met. So I just wanted to give you guys that quick update. Yeah, any questions?
Thanks for the wonderful news. Any questions, comments or concerns for Hunt Company? Hearing none. Thank you so much.
Thank you, everybody.
I wanted to go back to Uncle Mick Ferrera. Do you have a procedural question?
No, actually, it's good to see Tony Gaskin and former Colonel Mike Golyu. And actually what Thad was saying, when he was on our board, he did more for us in our committees than probably anyone. And we got bandit signs taken down. He stepped forward to speak up about graffiti, which we didn't have a lot back then, but I'm thinking that now if we can get our boxes, our utility boxes painted like the west side and things like that, I think one of the committees we need to put forward is anybody on our board now who wants to start a beautification committee and have him kind of the lead man, I, I totally vote for. I mean, we butt heads personally, but as far as this board goes, yeah, that's right. As far as this board goes, man, I'm right next to him. So that was just my comment. I'm glad to see him. I'm always glad to see him. And yeah, that's it.
Appreciate it, Uncle Mick and board member. Just a reminder that during public input, public input is reserved for non-board members, unless it's a procedural question. And what Uncle Mick said is totally fine, but it can be brought up under our number six members request for future agenda items. So, so we'll just all pretend that Uncle Mick did it in the appropriate category.
Sorry.
No problem. Yes, Dr. Bosler.
I'm sorry.
Procedural question. Yes.
Not really, sort of. I also have a public, just an announcement, and I'm wondering, is that, does that fall under?
It falls under number six. No, no board member is supposed to be doing public input.
Okay. It's not for an agenda. It's okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, in person, come on up.
Hi, my name is Leslie Keating and I'm a resident. I had two things when we were talking about emergency places that we would go to due to the state of the world and everything that's going on. This has been a concern lately, just because we are in a military area. I have actually two questions. One regarding like the military like thing that's in the hill. I'm not sure what's inside there, but I imagine it's open space and it's a bunker of some sort. So and all of us, or most of us don't have basements and things like that. So that, that spot like, you know, just occurred to me like, you know, what is in there? What is, you know, its usefulness, you know, what could it have in it? Is anything being thought of in that regards? I would like to see that whole area, you know, better maintained. And like a previous resident had said, where you could walk or you could go around it or it doesn't look like it's just an area for houseless and feral cats. But then also, and I know that's something that's take a long time to, to get discovered. But also like, what is our plan if something were to happen? Like, I don't know. I was talking to my husband. I don't know. Is there a Marshall plan? Like, do we, because we're so surrounded by all these military institutions. Like if something were to actually happen, what happens to our neighborhoods? Like, I have no idea. And I'm not sure that it's common knowledge, but I imagine it's something maybe the neighborhood board might know about, you know, like what happens to us as a neighborhood? Like, are we able to go outside the city without check? I have no idea. It just seems like things are very tense right now. And I always like to know what the plan is. So those were one things, but then in regards to the beautification project, especially painting those mail, the utility boxes, I would love to see that done more like the west side. And also one other thing, I would love to see more people here and online. And when I was in Salt Lake City, I did do some community outreach at like farmers markets and light fair type things like that, where I actually have like a big board, because a lot of people just don't even know that they're part of a neighborhood board. Like they have no idea this exists or what happens here. And so at that thing, I had like a large thing of Salt Lake City with all the different community councils. They call it community council boards. But any like which one you're in and like what they might do and when their meeting is. Because I, I know if you're not like really plugged in, you don't notice that kind of stuff. But a lot of people are interested and I would love to see more community engagement. And that could be as simple as like the farmer's market or even going to like the villages of Kapole board meeting and just doing a short presentation to introduce the board in that there are services available and concerns can be taken to the board and be addressed. So, yeah, and I'm also willing to volunteer on any type of thing if people need volunteers. Thank you.
Awesome. We'd like volunteers. Please make sure that you get us your contact information after the meeting. Okay, the only thing the chair can comment regarding what happens in the event that martial law is declared in Hawaii. Well, we have precedent because after the bombing of Pearl Harbor, a martial law was declared in Hawaii in 1941. And what that looks like is military control. Civil institutions are basically now the civil institutions functions are taken over by military. This could be including suspension of civil courts, could be them restricting movements and gatherings, could be them restricting media, could be control of resources. And it can definitely have impact on daily life in Hawaii. We have a sad history with internment camps right over here in our own area of Funuli Uli, where Japanese were interns. So it can get very serious very quickly if martial law is declared. Having said that, I don't know, I can speak on any other actions outside of what has happened and what is potentially able to happen under United States law. So any other na'o or thoughts for the member? Otherwise, we look forward to hearing from you. Oh, hello, my, I did want to clarify, when you're speaking about that bunker, are you talking about at Pu'u Kapole, the regional park? Okay, so the historic bunker site, if there's anything going on. If anybody knows, that would be great. Otherwise, we can try and find out. Maybe Nikki Allah or council member might know, or can at least help us figure it out. Now let's go back online. Okay, we're good online. We're good on public members. So let's walk up, council member Andrea Topola. Okay, we're good online. We're good on public members. So let's walk up council member Andrea Tippola.
Aloha Chair, aloha board members. Thank you, Chair. You actually answer a lot of people's questions. That's very unique. I do, I mean, I'm just saying, because usually it's just like, okay, thank you next. So thank you very much for all your historical knowledge. What school did you go to? Yes. Sorry, he's my classmate. So love this guy right here. Um, I just am gonna do some updates. You know, I just wanted to briefly talk about the homelessness and housing. So, you know, when you guys brought up concerns about Honu, of course, we're so grateful for, you know, the homeless liaison for being here, him coming to attend. But we do run a program called Restore, Connect, Revive, and we did it out of Dream House right here. And the people who helped us was Jesse and his wife from To The Top. And we also had the Mana Church, which I think they operate out of the mall, out of Kamakana Ali'i. And so they were helping us every day. So we actually helped 60 different people who are just homeless here in Kapole. So the difference is that our program can actually just help just focus regionally. That's kind of the issue and why Nanakuli didn't want Honu. Because when you're only helping 20% of people from the region, everyone on the West Side was like, nah, we good. So I think for me, comparing the program that we do, which Restore, We Connect, Revive, that we've been running with the community, we help people get into community court, we help with birth certificates, we give out bus passes, we help people get jobs. So it's just a little bit more comprehensive. And I don't know if you guys know, but Honu right now is bring your own bed. Did you guys know that? Yeah, this is why some people don't want to go. Would you go if you had to bring your bed? Some people know more of their bed. And then also the shower that's there is kind of like an outdoor makeshift shower and the four porta potties. So I calculated if there's 40 people there in one month, that's about $5,625 per person in a month. That'd be $187 we're paying per person for them to stay at Honu. We should just book them a hotel already, just right here at Kapole. I mean, 187, you get your own bed and you'd have your own shower and you can use the pool. I'm just saying, so in Kapole, I think $1.8 million was spent for the Honu to be here. Do you know what I could have done with $1.8 million? I could have purchased 72 homes for people. Could have purchased 72. So we just put up one of the plug-in houses up at Pu'u Honu, Hawaii, and I, each of the plug-in houses, $25,000. And guess how long it takes to put up the plug-in house? Four hours. And we had the National Guard help us. We put up 14 in like two days. So I'm just saying, I do think that what was mentioned about it being like, oh, it's not that much money. That's true. In the grand scheme, it's not. But for the stretch of what the money could do, we could actually house people. I think we should just go towards housing people. So just, I am, you know, I am the Chair of the Housing Homelessness and Parks Committee, so I'll be bringing it up at the City Council, whether or not this is an effective use of our money, which I don't think it is. And then I also wanted to say that the flowers that I gave you is for Price Into Paradise. So this is an event that I did last year. It's at the Blaze Dell. This year it's going to be on October 25th. And it's open to the public. It's free with registration. So what we do is we give insight on how you can be like a home buyer. So we have a home buying 101 class, we have home renovations, we have real estate investing. This year, we're going to have a job there and, and wait for it, guys. I'm going to be bringing a 3D printer. So we're going to print a house there at the event. Yeah, and we're actually bringing the 3D printer to Hawaii night. So we're going to print some up there. So I'm just saying, there's like so many solutions out there, and I'd rather us see solutions that lead to people being housed, right? Not just bring your own bed, stay in a bed. So I think for number two, for public safety, to answer Ms. Westock's question, the MOU between HPD and DPR is done. So HPD will be doing non-tactile training up at the archery range here in Kapole that will deter homelessness, that will actually like improve the whole area, but they haven't determined the start date. But the MOU is there and DPR is allowing them to use it from Monday through Friday. The Bushwhackers will use it on the weekend. They are the archery club. I passed three game room bills that were signed into law last week. Bill 11, 11, 12, and 13 with Councilmember Dos Santos Tam. And the last time we had a game room here in Kapole was a while ago, but it was in Homestead area. And I do think for most of the West Side communities, for us, that's where a lot of the shootings happen is at the game room. So the bills were super necessary for HPD tools. I passed a HPD vacancy task force, which will be making a plan to address the vacancies so that we can hopefully eventually have a District Nine. So that Kapole and Eva can be their own police district and Y and I can be its own police district. If we can address the vacancy issue, it could possibly happen. We did pass a resolution that we are going to be looking into doing overt monitoring at our parks because we can't have police there all the time. And so I think we have one out in Y and I right now, but it's at the Bull Harbor. But we're talking about the parks so that there's like safety precautions and so that people can use the parks better. Lastly, ordinance 2432 is passed. So now in all school zones, the speed is going to go from 25 to 20 miles an hour. So we're going to be investing money. We put in 500,000. We're going to have to put in more. All the signs will be changed around the school zones, all the markings. We're going to be doing education with the schools, with the principals, with the community. So this is a huge thing because I know for a lot of people, 25 is way too fast for in front of a school. And then for the, I guess, beautification of boxes, on the West Side, we worked with Valley of Rainbows at Halelua. We did Visions of Aloha AARP. Tamara's helped out. I think in Kamaki, it was 12 different artists that did all the electric boxes. So if you guys want help, we can do it. I think Chair said it. I love art. So let's get our art on, on all the boxes. I also did update some people, but I'll update you guys that the emergency access road through Grace Pacific, which we've talked with them and many other people, that will be done this year. So the MOU will allow for any emergency access if we need to, to be opened up. And that road is ready and, you know, paved and all the good things. And it can get people from Maka Kila Drive straight down to the freeway. Lastly, the city budget was passed, Bill 22 and 23. And next month, I'll have a flyer with you with all of the updates for what we got in our community. So I'm open for questions.
Mahalo. Any comments, questions, or concerns? Let's go to Dr. Amy Bosler.
This is a thank you because part of why I joined the board two years ago was the really poor condition of the Kapole Regional Park playground. And I was after you month after month. And a few months ago, it was fixed, but I haven't seen you for a while. So I wanted to thank you on behalf of all of our families, the thousands of kids that go there all the time. It is wonderful and it is something we can be proud of again. So thank you.
Oh, thank you. And my staff member Jeanie is here. So her and Kika helped me in the community. So I got to give credit where credit is due. These are the ladies that are like, hello, hello, are we done? Hello?
Chair recognizes Dr. Kionni Dudley.
Aloha. You know, last year, the council passed Bill 60. And that changed the state building code to the, or Oahu, allowing builders to build houses now without safe rooms. Is there any hope of getting the council to reverse that? I know that you did not vote in paper that, so.
I came back, get back to you via email. I got to re, I got to relook at it, Member Dudley. I'm going to say, I have a pretty good memory, but I got to relook at that bill. And then I'll get back to you on what we can do.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, thanks.
Chair recognizes board member Mick Ferrera.
Well, I got to say that you have become turbocharged.
I just finished my workout, so probably that.
I'm telling you, man, it's like that list of things just warmed my heart. And especially the part about homeless services and things like that. And, oh, just everything just gave me chicken skin. So it's really nice to see you at our meeting. And, you know, giving us an update like that is just uplifting. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I apologize if I haven't been here. My daughter just graduated like two weeks ago. If you've had a senior, you know what I'm talking about. Your life is consumed by your children. So I'm back to life. She's graduated.
I totally get it. I totally get it. But then when you come back with a pile of accomplishments like that, I, that's, that's good. Thank you.
Any other comments, questions, or concerns from the board? Any comments, questions, or concerns for our councilwoman from the community at large? Mahalo.
Chair England again, and Andrea, thank you so much for your report. I am just thrilled about your organization and what you have done. And yes, let's get people housed. That's the bottom line when it comes to houselessness. It's a housing problem, not anything else but a housing problem. So thank you, ma'am.
She actually came to my homeless symposium. I just have to say that. Thank you for coming. We had it here at Dream House. And I just, I can't iterate more. What could Kapole have done with $1.8 million besides that? You know, to your point, like, I think I could have hired three case managers. There's so many things I could have done. How much bus passes? So I don't know if the board's willing, but I mean, maybe write a resolution and say, you know, we're looking into housing solutions. And I'm not talking about the ones that are like 900 a month, which in my district, I only have one, two areas that have that. I'm talking like $300 a month. That's kind of what I'm looking for in some of these populations, and we have none in our district. So if you guys are willing, write a resolution, even about the boxes, electric, something. Just tell me what you guys are thinking and then let's do some projects together. Right, Thad? Let's do it. Thank you, Chair.
Awesome. Wanted to extend our mahalo to the councilwoman for doing amazing work with us in the trenches to help better our community. And also wanted to take the time to acknowledge and congratulate her for her recent rise to the vice chair position in the city council. Long overdue and well deserved to have a ono wahine in that position. Okay. Mahalo. Now let's go to any other electeds online or in person, starting with the Federals. Then if Uncle Gordon is still with us, going to the governor's representative, Uncle Gordon Pang.
I'm here. Can you see me? Can you hear me?
Yes, we see you and hear you, and you look to be on fire.
Wonderful. Everybody's on fire tonight. So aloha Chair, Vice Chair, his board members, and other fellow West Oahu residents. I'm Gordon Pang, your representative to the Office of the Governor. At your May meeting, a board member asked for a status update on the Daniel Kahikina Akaka State Veterans Home in Kapole. The board member said he was under the impression that it's taken time for the facility to fill up. He wanted to know why and what the timeline is to fill all 120 units. So I'm going to be spending most of my allotted time this evening passing on the message provided to me by the state's Office of Veteran Affairs. And specifically Tommy Driscoll, the retired Colonel, and now the Healthcare Coordinator for the State of Hawaii's Office of Veteran Affairs. So here's the timeline. Construction for the facility was substantially completed and turned over from local contractor Nain Incorporated to the Oahu Regional Healthcare Systems HHSC on August 1st, 2024. Ohana Pacific Health was selected the management contractor. And it began hiring and training staff, developing standard operating procedures, finalizing the construction and design work and other post-construction and pre-opening work. This all began in January 2025. With the help of the Oahu Regional Healthcare System HHSC and Ohana Pacific Health, the Senior Veterans Home received from the state operating from the state and operating licenser certificate certification on January 21st, 2025. The facility accepted its first patient on February 4th. At this point, the facility invited a federal Department of Veterans Affairs team to conduct a pass fail recognition survey. Passage of this survey is needed to have the facility kick into full gear. While the facility unofficially passed the survey on May 16th, staff is waiting for formal approval. This will allow the facility to begin receiving daily per diem payments retroactively. Additionally, the facility is in the midst of the Center for Medicare and Medicaid survey process and is expected to receive a visit from survey, oh, excuse me. Yeah, is expected to receive a visit from surveyors from the Center for Medicare and Medicaid to conduct a survey. Successful passage of the survey will make the facility eligible for Medicare and Medicaid patient reimbursement where applicable. During this timeframe, Akaka has increased patient census to a total of 20 veterans patients as of May 30th. The facility's goal is to hire additional staff gradually, carefully, and safely, allowing it to increase the number of patients by between four to six more patients each month. Exactly how many new patients will be added monthly will depend on a number of factors associated with both patient acuity and staff capability that will govern the actual monthly patient intake numbers going forward. So, or regarding the Akaka Center. And then I also want to talk about landlord-tenant mediation afterward, just briefly. Any questions regarding the Veteran Center?
Any questions, comments, or concerns on the Veteran Center update? Thank you.
Okay, so I noticed that landlord tenant issues are before your board later this evening as part of a resolution. I just want, I don't want to discourage anyone from this board or anyone else from not supporting or from supporting the creation of a landlord-tenant mediation program. However, the State Department of Commerce and Consumer Affairs does operate a landlord-tenant information center. The state judiciary also has resources to help the public understand and interpret the landlord-tenant code. And finally, the, not a state agency, but the nonprofit Legal Aid Society of Hawaii offers legal assistance to citizens who are entangled in landlord-tenant issues. They do good work. You can easily find more information about any of these programs by Googling them. I was able to find them just waiting my turn here this evening. If you want me to help you find those resources, I can reach my email as well. Gordon.pang@hawaii.gov. And if anyone has any other questions or issues they want to bring up with me, feel free to do so here or via my email address. Thank you.
Mahalo. Thank you for the update from the governor. Any questions, comments, or concerns for the governor's office from board members? Any questions, comments, or concerns from the community at large? Everyone thinks you deserve a break, Uncle Gordon, so take the month off.
Thanks, Doc.
You have no homework. Great. Anyone from the Senate? Aloha. Hey.
Aloha. Yes. Thank you. You too, Chair Paris and Vice Chair Lidstone, Vice Chair Dudley, and all the honorable board and community members. Our community liaison is, just getting back from vacation. I'm Meg. For those of you who don't know, Meg Turner, Senator Gabbard's office manager, and have been with him since 2014. He sends his best wishes to you and your Ohana. Last Saturday, he kicked off, he attended a kickoff meeting. You all may have heard of it. It was in the news for a new Department of Law Enforcement. And it was created to help implement a bill to protect Hawaii's farms and farmers and ranchers, S B 1249. This bill was expect, is, is expected to pass into law with the bill signing ceremony this Friday. And what it does is launches a pilot agricultural enforcement program to crack down on ag crimes, safeguard our lands, and support local farmers. Bills to fight crime on ag land have actually been introduced in the legislature for about the last 10 years. Unfortunately, it took a very tragic event where a young rancher was murdered last year protecting his land to finally get lawmakers to take this seriously. I'll share a link to Senator Gabbard's June newsletter in the chat. And he invites you all to join his next Listen Story Community Meeting, July 26th, from 9:00 to 10:00 AM at the Villages of Kapole Recreational Center. And you can also find previous recordings to his Listen Story meetings on his YouTube channel, which I'll put that in the link as well, put that link in the chat as well. So please reach out to sendgabbard@capital.hawaii.gov or call our office at 808-586-6830 if you have any questions or if we can assist you in any way and. And uh with that, I'd be happy to take back any questions to the Senator. Mahalo.
Mahalo. Good to see you, Meg. Thanks you for being here with us this evening. Any question, comments, or concerns for Senator Gabbert's office from the board or the community? Seeing none, I just wanted to say again mahalo to you and the team and Senator Gabbert for their advocacy this past legislative cycle, particularly with the villages of Kapolei, roads. Now the city has jurisdiction to, for HPD to go there and do their thing.
Yes, that was a huge deal. Yes, and we're really appreciative of Representative Garcia for uh putting that story in the uh paper. So West Oahu Voice. So thanks very much for mentioning that. Aloha, everyone.
Aloha. Thank you to Senator Gabbert and the support from Representative Garcia in the House. Okay.
Yes.
Any other Senator? In speaking of representatives, any representatives with us this evening or their liaison? Okay, seeing none. Last call for public input, going once, going twice, going three times. You had your chance, and now we're to board business. Okay, board business, a position on draft environmental assessment for Hawaii Keke Cable Landing Expansion Project. Anyone wishing to testify? Going once, going twice, going three times. Chair's recommendation is that we defer this matter because uh board members have been invited out uh to go and engage with Hawaii Keke um team uh on site. So and we we have still outstanding visits. So unless there's a desire to move forward at this time, Chair's recommendation is to defer. Is there any objection? Hearing no objection, the chair calls it by defer or by unanimous consent. Now let's get to the fun part, identification of pet-friendly parks, everyone. We've gotten this assignment from the Departments of Park and Recreation, requested it in an April twenty-five, twenty twenty-five letter to help us help them identify parks for installation of fenced dog areas or to accommodate unleashed dogs. Or and so appropriate signage and and poopy bag dispensers, so. And I'm sure we can also include cats in that too or other appropriate animals that are pets. So um let's open up for uh public testimony. Anyone from the community wishing to provide their mana'o on where we should put them? Now's the time, online or in person. We have received uh a number of comments um through the testimony portal and through communications to board members. But so I'll bring that up later, but now let's go to our board members to see if there's any comments on which ones we should put forward. Okay, Chair recognizes Dr. Amy Bossler. Go ahead.
I was wondering, Chair, if we could hear from um Vice Chair Mikiela Lindstone, since she is our parks um chair.
Chair asks um member Mikiela Lindstone if she's willing to provide an update if our committee has had time to make a recommendation. Be great.
I haven't yet seen any of the testimony yet, um Chair, or anything that has come in through any of the testimony portal. So I haven't yet seen anything that has come in from the community. But I I would suggest that whatever park is recommended, that it not be Kapolei Regional Park because that park is so heavily used by through by sports.
So the recommendations that have come in from communications are all for the neighborhood level parks. So the ones like on the street where people's houses are, like, because that's where they're going to take their dogs across the street, not walk them to the ne- the regional.
Yeah, and 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 that, those would be great recommendations.
So um the recommendation right now is not the regional park and potentially all of the neighborhood level parks for um unleashed or at least fenced areas to be carved out. Any other mana'o? Yes.
I would like to make a recommendation. Uh, we've, we heard a few months back, we haven't had an update about what's happening with a parcel of land over by Kala Loa. Um, I think that would also be a great area because it is undeveloped. And so they could have, you know, potentially make a really large dog park with possibly a walking trail or a running trail in the mid- middle of it that people could walk with their animals. Um, there are some other cities throughout the country that have um really incredible dog parks like that, and it would be wonderful because we do have the space on this side. Thank you.
Okay, so there is a recommendation also for including of that particular unused parcel um in our recommendation to the Parks Director at this time. Any other mana'o? Dr. Kiony Dudley.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I just want to ask, uh, is this area going to be fenced? Where the unleashed dogs are going to be?
So the, so we can recommend it be fenced or unfenced. So so unless we, we get to decide right now what we're going to recommend and they will let us know what is possible given regulations for space. That's the constraint I see, is whether or not they have appropriate space to fence off in various neighborhood areas.
And when you mention these parks uh that uh are on the streets, are we talking about a park like the one at the top of Makakilo?
Hmm. That could be included, but the ones I'm thinking of are the ones at the bottom of Makakilo on the right side.
Okay.
Right above the the church's area. So it's not like the larger parks, it's like, there's like greenery, maybe a basketball court.
Oh, I see. Okay. All right, that's fine.
I think that's, for me, that that is more justification of why we should consider an undeveloped area like Kala Loa. Um, just so that we could create something large enough to accommodate both large and small dogs. Um, the, I don't personally, I I work in volunteer a lot in foster and rescue and I personally don't go to any of the dog parks on island because they are so small and it can be get very dangerous if you have a lot of dogs there who are unsocial or or just moderately socialized. Um, so it would be really nice to have space so that dogs can be able to um exercise with their owners in a safe environment. Thank you.
Okay, so any other thoughts or recommendations? Okay, um, Chair recognizes Uncle Mike O'U.
Just time. Puai Lai Neighborhood Park outside the baseball area was designated for a an animal placed and it would be fenced off. But I don't know what happened to that after that, but it was at one time being considered. Just wanted to pass that along.
Thanks, Uncle Mike. And and just to clarify to everyone, according to um parks, there are no parks in our entire district that actually is allowed for dogs or other pets to go, leashed or otherwise. So we have a few options to go through. Right now, we have neighborhood parks, not the regional park. Um, and the last one we have to consider is whether or not we're going to recommend that they be fenced or not fenced.
Yes, um, I don't know if, um, Chair, if I may, I'm not sure if Thad Spurg is still on here, but I believe it was just three years ago that um DPR was like no dog parks. You may not have any dog park in any city park. They were like, absolutely not. And now they've totally done, you know, like a one eighty or whatever. I mean, it's like, um, so I think we need to just choose a park. Just like, close your eyes, choose a neighborhood park, just choose it, give it to them before they change their mind. If you can do that, Chair, I appreciate it. Go ahead. Uh, yeah, sad, uh, Chair, yeah, yeah, go ahead.
Okay, uh, Chair recognizes Thad Spurg. Go ahead.
Yes, thank you. Um, I wasn't going to say anything, but since it's come around. Um, I I feel like this is a, uh, there's a name for it, a fool's folly might be the right term. I feel like, like, we don't know what the city's requirements are for a dog park. Like, we might suggest put it at the top of Makakilo at the, at the rec center. And they might say, well, you can't because of this, or we might say, put it at the property across the street from Walmart. That's a, that'd be a great spot for one. And they might say, well, you can't because of this. Like, we don't know what their restrictions and limitations are, and we're just, we're just, you know, making a guess here. And I just, I just feel like this is not a, I don't know, I'd love to, I'd love to see it happen, but but uh I feel like we're just, we're just guessing here, so I don't know. I hate to be such a downer, but but that's uh, that's my thought on this process.
Okay, thank you. Um.
Because we've been here before, we've been here before, the city.
Yes, thank you, board member Mikiela Lindstone. I love the honest and appropriate feedback. So a- at this time, um, oh, we have one more board member, Mick Ferrer. Go ahead.
We worked on this a few years ago, and one of the options that we were looking at is down Fort Barrett Road, kind of on that corner that's on the backside of the archery. Um, and be able to clear out a big area there of trees and a bunch of stuff. And I don't know if that's still state property or whether it's city and county. Um, and then the other one was as a second dog park was up, um, Makakilo Drive down Puai Lai. And there's a park going up there because there's a lot of people that use it right now as a dog park illegally. And if they had it fenced off where you had big dogs and little dogs, um, would be heavily used. And then the other one, like I said, down at the bottom of uh like Fort Barrett Road on that one corner there uh would be another spot because you'd also have a place for parking right off of Fort Barrett. So those were the things that we had talked about when we actually had a committee, I think, that was um considering it, but nobody wanted to do the heavy lifting and the city wasn't cooperative. So it just kind of died. That's all I got.
Gotcha. So I hear the tenor of the discussion and the chair is going to make a recommendation given everyone's mana'o. Then we'll have public testimony and then we'll, uh, then we'll have a discussion. So the chair is recommending that we reply back to the Parks Department and let them know that we would like dog parks at all of the parks except for the regional park and they should be fenced. So we will ask for it all and see what we get responses back. And we also include um the undevelopment areas that uh Dr. Amy Bossler has put up. Um, and just checking with the chair for parks, whether or not we should also include uh the area um that's currently not developed in in adjacent to the regional park or not.
Include it all.
Okay, got it. So we're going to include all of the options because our community has been talking about dog parks for quite a while. So yes, to everything except for the regional park proper. Okay, okay. And now we're open for public testimony on the recommendation of the chair. Come on up.
Leslie Keating again, Mr. President. Um, I like the idea of asking to know all of the options. Um, but like someone mentioned before, until we know where they actually think that these can be built, um, I I would want to have that input. Like, that's when I want to say this is what we really want and have it brought back to the neighborhood board. So if there's three sites in Kapolei that they think they can make work, then I would love to see that come back to the neighborhood board and then we can vote on those three sites. Um, I have a feeling that they're not going to give us more than one dog park in the next five years. So it would be nice to um at that point, but yeah, cross Kapolei region.
Awesome. Any others wishing to publicly testify? Going once, going twice, going three times. Chair loved the testimony and uh the recommendation will be adjusted to include that we request that before they finalize any selection of dog parks, that they come and present to the board those options that can be workable. Okay, Dr. Dudley, discussion? Fenced, they're fenced, all fenced, yeah. So I just clarified with Dr. Dudley, the recommendation is that all of, all of the areas that we're asking for to be fenced. Okay, any further discussion from board members? Going once, going twice, going three times. Thank you so much. So all those in favor of the chair's recommendation, say aye. Any opposed, say aye. Any abstentions, say kana'loa. Hearing none, chair calls it unanimous. And this is again to recommend to the Parks Department that we would like them to consider all parks in our district for fenced dog parks except for the regional park proper, but adjacent to the regional park and also the undeveloped area that was specified earlier be considered as well. Okay. Good job, everyone. We are now moving forward. Um, we have resolutions under C resolutions supporting the establishment of statewide landlord-tenant mediation program. We already adopted, um, this um was placed on the agenda again to see if anyone had um concerns or needs for amendments. If there is no concerns or needs for amendments, then the chair will ask that we postpone indefinitely. Anyone wishing to publicly testify? Okay, only reason why I'm doing this is because we went so fast the last time. It's, we already done it, we've had the conversations, but if anybody realized that, oh, we missed something, now's the time to say something, okay? So, yes, Dr. Dudley, go ahead.
Uh, we just had the um, Mr. Suzuka, uh, or some, somebody, I guess it was actually.
Uncle Gordon Pang.
Okay, who said that, uh, you know, there are many other places where you can get this done. And we're in this asking for the establishment of a statewide program. Um, I I I don't understand what's going on. You you just said we're going to not pursue it at this present time.
We've already adopted the position, so let me clarify. The position in brief is that we're supporting the mediation program, which does not exist. Is to have a mediator outside of the court system in order to have landlord and tenant work together, realizing that it is usually financially more appealing to both parties to have it mediated than going to court and waiting out three, six, nine months. All of the programs that exist right now helps people in the court process. But still, if they're three months of rent, six months of rent, nine months of rent, they still there. Like the landlord's losing out on money and the people um like are, they have lawyer costs now that are going up because they're fighting the landlord if they're a tenant. Um, it could get messy, so but a mediation program similar to what has been presented to us a couple of neighborhood board meetings ago, they could resolve their things on average be, like, within a week by having a third party just help them come to a realization that this is in all of their mutual benefits. So that's what we already supporting. It's an alternative. It can still go to court and they can still use all of the programs that Uncle Gordon brought up. Okay, any other questions? Any wish wishing to publicly testify? If not, the chair's recommendation is to postpone indefinitely, basically meaning we're not passing it. Um, any objections?
Why aren't we passing it?
We already did.
Okay, all right.
We passed it, we passed this resolution.
That's fine, that's fine.
Yeah, last, last month.
Why, why don't we say that instead of um postponing, just uh, we already did this and forget it, move on?
That's the procedural move. It's called to postpone indefinitely, meaning that at this time, we're not going to change our previous position.
Okay.
So that's what it translates, everyone. So I'm just using fancy procedural language. But it means the position we currently have is good.
Good.
And we're not going to change it right now.
Okay.
It's a nice way of killing somebody. Otherwise, we would all vote this down. And then the question will be like, did we just vote down our actual resolution that we passed? Okay, everybody on the same page? Okay, is there any objections to postponing indefinitely at this time? Okay, hearing none, it is postponed. So that means we're not taking any action, so the one's already adopted is good and we're not saying we killed it. Very good. Next, let's go to resolutions supporting Pua Kapolei becoming a sorry, standing in solidarity with diversity, supporting Hawaiian immersion education. The similar to the last one, since it was rushed, is there any? Is there any reason for us to amend this? Concerns, questions? Okay, hearing none, the chair's recommendation is to postpone indefinitely, again reaffirming our position. Is there anyone wishing to publicly testify? Going once, twice, three times? No one wants to publicly testify? We already have our position, we like the immersion school come to Kapole, we support the fact that Pro City is on the same page with us, we think is good. And by voting in support of the recommendation of the chair, we're retaining our current position. Everybody on the same page? Is there any objection to the chair's recommendation to postpone indefinitely? Hearing none, it is postponed. Good job. Now for the new ones. We have Resolution E, supporting Pua Kapole becoming a public community garden. Um, there was the change correcting the issues over status, and that was mentioned from the last time outside of that. Um, it is as is. And the chair's recommendation is that we pass it with the change, which we took out the error. It's not on the federal register. Is there any other recommendations to amend? Hearing none? Let's open for public testimonies. Anyone wishing to testify on supporting Pua Kapole becoming a public community garden, city designated and recognized? Hearing none? Let's go to discussion. Any further discussion? We talked about this last time, and we made the appropriate changes. Any issues, concerns? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, say a ole. Any abstentions, say kanalua. Hearing none, congratulations, we have adopted this position. Now, let's go to resolutions that we deferred last time because we ran out of time. Resolution opposing the opening of Papahanamoku Akia Marine National Monument to Commercial Fishing. Um, and the resolution has been circulated, and there is amendment to the language. Let me just make sure we're all on the same page. And the chair's recommendations with amended language was, instead of saying opposing the opening of and to commercial fishinging, is that we just made it positive, made it, instead of a negative, we made it a positive statement, which is we're supporting the continued stewardship. Because that's already happening right now. We don't want it to change because of what they did with the other national monument. So supporting the continued stewardship, everything else in the resolution stays the same, but conforming that and the resolved clause to say, supporting the continued stewardship of Papahanamoku Akia Marine National Monument. Okay, that's the chair's recommendation. Is there anyone wishing to testify publicly at this time? Seeing none, because we've talked about these matters quite a bit. We, we just take a while to get our resolutions done, which is totally fine. Okay, um, so, opening up for discussions. Any board members wish to speak on the resolution? Dr. Kiyomi Dudley, recognize.
Uh, this is the, uh, Marine National Monument stretching out through the islands. Okay. And this is the one that, uh, our beloved president is trying to open up? Okay. Uh, that's fine, thank you. This clarified.
Yes, Dr. Dudley, we had, um, brought this up. I brought this up, um, a few weeks prior to our current president, um, bringing this, uh, national monument, uh, to the public's eye. So we, as a board, were trying to get ahead of that and pass a, a resolution for us to support, have, um, our elected officials in the state of Hawaii to support the stu- continued stewardship of PMNM.
Okay, any, uh, further discussion? Okay, and just to clarify for those that, um, are new to the conversation, the reason why this is important at this time or timely is because, um, the president signed the proclamation um, to permit the opening of the Pacific Remote Islands Marine National Monument for commercial fishing. And this resolution is affirming that the current restrictions on commercial fishing should stand, and the current co-management between Office Point Affairs and the National Oceanic, Oceanic and Atmospheric Administration, NOAA, and the United States Fish and Wildlife Service, and the Department of Land and Natural Resources as co-management trustees should continue. Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say a ole. Any abstentions, say kanalua. Hearing none? The chair calls it unanimous, passing resolution supporting the continued stewardship of Papahanamoku Akia Marine National Monument. Awesome, good job, everyone. We are on the home stretch. So, um, we have approvals before us. We have approval of the written summary for video record Wednesday, April twenty-third, twenty-twenty-five, Wednesday, May twenty-eight, twenty-twenty-five, and the one from February, and the special meeting minutes from January ninth. All on the docket. Is there a motion to approve? Chair recognizes Dr. Amy Bosler. Secretary, moving to approve all of them. Is there a second? Second by Dr. Kiyomi Dudley. Any discussion? Anyone needing changes? So anything out of order? Okay, hearing none. Anyone wishing to publicly testify on the minutes? Hearing none. Okay, we're going to vote. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say a ole. Any abstentions, say kanalua. Okay. Great. Now to the last item of business, and with that, I would like to welcome up Executive Secretary Lloyd Yonanaka.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Oh, you skipped G. Oh. Excuse me.
Board business, we are still on board business. Yeah. Yeah, I didn't skip, oh, well, we'll get to G after. This is the final one, which is the communication letter to, um, Representative Darius Kila. And we'll ask Executive Secretary, um, to come up, uh, in order to provide Manao as we consider, um, the response that I have drafted on the, for the board to consider officially sending to Representative Kila about the, um, alleged conduct of a board member outside of a board meeting. And then also emphasizing the matter of freedom of speech under First Amendment of the United States Constitution and appropriate case law that raises the bar for defamation against elected officials. And clarifying, there's only so many things we can do. And now we have the Executive Secretaries to share with us, uh, his words of wisdom and aloha regarding this matter.
Thank you. At least I think it's thank you. You took, uh, thought, I thought it was a fairly simple concept, and it became really complicated. Lloyd Yonanaka, Executive Secretary for Neighborhood Commission. Uh, we oversee all of neighborhood boards, Jeffrey works for me. Um, we make sure the, we contract with the video guys, and then we do all the work to make sure this place is available. Um, I, I think, I think you had a, I don't know why you asked me to be here. I thought you guys had a pretty good handle on, on with that letter. I think it covered everything, uh, I think. And in my, in my perspective, um, there's only certain things that a board can do. You know, there's a complaint process for the board system, but it's only a complaint against a board member or a board. Um, it's not a complaint against your NA, Jeffrey, or me, or the videographer, or anybody else, um, you, and, and I think from my perspective, because I tend to oversee the entire board system, I have a, probably a big broader view. And, uh, what I told the chairs, what I wanted to say, instead of getting into the details of what you can and can't do, what's proper, what's not proper. Last Saturday, we had the neighborhood, uh, maybe we had the, um, neighborhood board, uh, inauguration, the swearing-in ceremony, and I know some of you were there. But I wanted to reiterate for those who were there, and also for those who weren't there, that my view of what we do here is really for the public. And it's for you guys. I will defend you to the end from these guys. And I say that, I say that with a little sense of humor, because I know everybody here is very passionate. But I think what I, what I said at the inauguration is appropriate now and is appropriate for anything in the future. You know, the, and I, it came from a story I read twenty-something years ago where a reporter asked an outgoing mayor what they thought would be the biggest challenge going forward. And interestingly, the response was that, uh, this outgoing mayor said they believe the biggest challenge we will face going forward will be our ability to get along with each other. And, and it's interesting because you can have the smallest problem that will never get solved if you can't get along with each other. And you will have massive problems that you can solve if you can get along with each other. So I want everybody to keep that in mind, that as we go through this whole process of meetings, there will be glitches, there'll be stumbles, there'll be people who get a little offended, there'll be people that raise their voice, and it's because we're passionate, and that's fine. But I think what we need to do is always remember, at the end of the day, we need to get along so we can discuss everything. And I think that is the most important thing for all of us to remember. You know, I've known Kiyoni for a long time. We have agreed and disagreed. And, and, but at the end of the day, it's because I know he has a position that he believes in. Okay, if I disagree, I disagree. But the point is, we still get up in the morning and go on. And we still continue our work, and for all of the board members and the people of the public. We just, the key is we be, have to be able to get along. We cannot walk away from the table. And I think that's what's important on, on your letter. I thought you were very gracious in, in, in your letter. And I thought you outlined everything. And, and the bottom line is that, you know, we we need to move that to, on the side and start moving forward again. Because it, the whole point of the neighborhood board system, the whole point of everyone being here is for the public. And, and, and I am a staunch defender of their right to say what they want to say. That's important to me. Um, you have a vote. They don't. You make a resolution, they don't. So they have a right to opine on everything. You need their opinion. You, as a board, are the most powerful board when you can get the public behind you. So, that being said, I think it was great. Um, I'd like to see the board just move forward. You got a number of issues on the table. And you will continue to have issues. I, I am, I was fascinated with your list of resolutions. Some were extremely important in terms of human life. And, and then, you know, some maybe not as important. But the, but the point is, it's important to somebody. So just recognize that. But I want to thank all of you for serving on the board. Really, thank you, Chair.
Mahalo, Executive Secretary, for your words of wisdom and Manao regarding our current situation and our correspondence. Are there any questions for the Executive Secretary before we move forward? Hearing none, thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Let me summarize the letter, um, before we move to discussion. We acknowledge Representative Kila, um, the concerns that he raised regarding a, a fellow board member, recognizing that it happened outside of a board meeting. We recognize free speech is protected under the US Constitution and under New York Times versus Sullivan, a higher bars is for any elected official or any defamation case. We also encourage that we should be in respectful dialogue in all places, times. And we also acknowledge, um, the representative's decision not to participate in our neighborhood board meetings, and because of the allegations, and we respect that, and and also, it's another invitation for him to come back, if he would like, if it's safe for him. And we also clarify that this may have been a different story if such allegations happen at a meeting where we have rules on decorum, which are stipulated at the top of our agenda. In part, remarks that include profanity or disrespectful, disparaging, or abusive will be considered violations of order and decorum, and the maker of such remarks may be removed. So that's our recourse. And as far as we've gone during my tenureship, we have never removed anyone for decorum. We've had heated language, and that from my perspective, it's sharing. You can use any words you want, so long as you're addressing it to the presiding officer and not to someone else. So that's a judgment call for removal. It may have been different, the board may have thought it was different, but it wasn't the case. And we also let, um, the representative know if they want to follow through on this. We recognize they can. We'll go to the Neighborhood Board Commission to file a complaint or pursue judicial action if they so wish. And we thank them for their commitment to serving our community. So that's the outline of the letter. Are there any questions about the letter and its outline at this time? Okay, Chair recognizes Board Member Michaela Lindstone.
Mahalo, Chair. I just want to just share that, um, I have the utmost respect for Representative Kila. He is a tremendous member of this community and the community that he serves, and I would truly miss his presence in our community, um, in our meetings. Mahalo.
I'll, I'll take that as a, as a, uh, recommendation to add in that sentiment, that we would truly miss you being present. Without objection, okay? That sentiment can be added to the, the letter more clearly. Any other discussion? Okay, hearing none? All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say a ole. Any abstentions, say kanalua. Hearing none? The letter has been adopted for formal response from our board to Representative Kila's June fifth email query regarding allegations of behaviors of a fellow board member um, with the sentiment added that we would truly miss his presence. Okay. Now, we are heading into number we are, um, going through number G. It was on the agenda, and second vice chair, Kiyomi Dudley, they had called the orders of the day and reminded me about G. Um, so far, um, G, supporting the protection of P I H M N M. That resolution hasn't been, uh, fully flushed out, and we have not received that. So at this time, um, the chair recommends that we postpone indefinitely, and if a fully flushed out resolution comes before us, then we can take it up again. Chair recognizes Dr. Dudley.
Could I ask, what is the Pacific Islands Heritage Marine National Monument?
So that is the location that President Trump, uh, opened up, um, to, um, commercial fishinging, and it's basically, um, the south of us around all of the US-controlled, uh, territory and in the Pacific, out to Palmyra Island, I believe. So it is one of the two national monuments in the Pacific, and he opened up one of them. Already, that one. Any other questions, concerns? Chair's recommendation stand that we postpone indefinitely. Um, is there any objection? Hearing no objection, chair calls it unanimous? The chair did say that the resolution can come up again, but we, until there is, I, I, the chair is not inclined to agendize it if we do not have a resolution to vote on. Okay, seeing that, any objections? Hearing none. Chair calls it unanimous. Doesn't mean we can't vote on a resolution that is entitled this next, next, next month or the month after. We just need the flushed out result that circulated so everybody can see them. So we know what we're voting on. Okay, great. With that, let's go to number six, member requests for future agenda items. This is where board members can, under the new structure and guidance, bring up concerns and issues in the community and ideas that we can talk about and consider for them to be further vetted or discussed in the future. So anybody have board quote-unquote announcements? What's the issues, concerns, things that are coming up? Go right ahead, Dr. Amy Bosler.
Thank you. I really wanted to get this earlier in the night, so I apologize. I hope somebody is still online listening. I had invited Representative from NPEACE to come speak with us tonight, but they weren't able to be here. So I just wanted to make an announcement. NPEACE has, uh, right now through July 6th, every day from 11:00 AM to 7:00 PM, they're hosting the Kaulalei at Kamakana Ali'i, introducing the newest exhibits, Explorers of Lawai'a, and also featuring Loko'ia Kapuna Technology in Action and Kaulana Mahina, Look Up, Look Down, Look All Around Exhibits. These are interactive Hawaiian culture and science exhibits that offer attendees of all ages the opportunity to kilo-observe, ni-loa-explore, and noee-investigate, and then learn about the Lawai'a fishermen, Loko'ia Hawaiian fish ponds, and Kaulana Mahina Hawaiian lunar calendar. So this is going on now until July 6th. It's completely free. My family has gone multiple times. We highly, I highly encourage everyone to go. It doesn't matter how old you are. It's appropriate for all ages. And maybe potentially try to help this organization find some money to make this a permanent exhibit because it is fantastic. And we really should have a brick and mortar that this is year-round for all of our communities. Thank you.
Awesome. Mahalo for the recommendation for potential presentation by NPEACE on their in-community installations on Lawai'a and Kaulana Mahina and potentially seeing about supporting a permanent installation of such. Okay, sounds good. I can note that. Anyone else have board quote-unquote announcements, potential agenda items? Dr. Kiony Dudley, go right ahead.
I'd like to request a future agenda item. The other day, we had a meeting of our PIG group. And after the meeting was over, we were talking about this, the fact that the city council removed the requirement for safe rooms from the Oahu building code. And I want to, want to say that a safe room is a room that can withstand any hurricane. And so I would like to see us invite DR Horton to come, asking their president to come to talk about the possibility of, first of all, what are they doing as far as safe rooms are concerned? And try to talk to them about the possibility of building safe rooms on their own, even though it's not a requirement. And I, I do believe that if they began to advertise that they had safe rooms with attached bathrooms that were also safe rooms, possibly kitchens, if they were to advertise that to people, they would have a real good selling point. And I, I do believe that other builders would voluntarily begin to do the same kind of thing in order to sell their homes. So I, I think it's an important thing for us to bring up. The other thing is that DR Horton was supposed to have homes built with backyard gardens. And to my knowledge, they haven't done any of those yet. And I don't know if they still plan on doing that. It was a requirement. I was on the, I can't remember the name of the group, but the, it was required by the state for their approval. And I'd like to know what's going on with those. And I'd like to have that be part of the presentation they would make too.
Awesome. So heard making a request to DR Horton for a presentation on current developments and the possibility of putting in safe rooms and status of backyard gardens. Okay, I would also think that we would take up the recommendation of the PIG regarding a resolution for supporting safe rooms and directing that both to all of the developers in our area and also to the city council, both. If there are any other recommendations from the PIG's report, please, members, feel free to let me know now or via email and we can work on the, the documents because we need to create the material that we would vote on. Yes, is there any other board member before we go back to Dr. Amy Bosler? Okay, right back to you, Dr. Bosler.
Last one.
Sure.
This was something that we had talked about repeatedly since Christmas and I had been putting it off with the intention of creating a committee in August. However, I am an outgoing board member. So I would request that the future board, please consider a holiday committee and putting that on for one of our future discussions. Last year, we had the beautiful holiday at Hale Kapale. We had trees created by all of our neighboring neighborhood boards and we did not have one from Kapale. And so this is a sense of pride and this is our hale. So we need to be represented. I know it seems trivial to some, but it was an embarrassment that we did not have a tree in our own hale last year for the celebration. So please, future board, get a holiday committee together. I'm happy, I can't chair it because I'm outgoing, but I'll be vice chair. I will put the darn tree up and decorate it myself if I have to. But we cannot have another year where we aren't representing in our own community. Thank you.
Got it. So a future agenda item in July, after we organize, we'll agendize Vice Chair, Dr. Amy Bosler for Holiday Committee and Vice Chair Thad Sprague for Beautification Committee. So yes, that's, we can put that on the agenda. Any other future agenda items for our consideration from board members? Dr. Dudley, go right ahead.
Is this the time to talk about other things too? Okay. You know, we approved the meeting of the three neighborhood boards. And while we were at the PIG meeting this last week, half of the PIG is from EVA and they are not among the three boards. They would like to meet with us as a fourth board. And I don't know if we need to just move ahead with that or if we need to vote on it. If we do have to vote on it, I, I would like to see it put on the agenda for tonight because I don't think it's the kind of thing that really affects anything. But I, I'd like to see what the situation is and move ahead with it.
Okay, so as I understand, Dr. Dudley already from our last neighborhood board, we empowered him to coordinate with neighborhood boards from Nanakuli Maile and Yani and ourselves for a joint meeting. So time, place, location, and agenda. So I'm hearing that there is interest from EVA to jump on board. So I don't believe that this is, I believe this is a minimized administrative measure that we can take by two-thirds vote now to add to the agenda and then vote on, empower you to talk to them, to coordinate such. The reason why is because each board individually has to publish their own notice, even though we are coordinating and all we're doing is administrative legwork. So.
Let me add something too. I think that once Pearl City hears about this, that it's quite possible they're going to want to join us also.
Okay, so we can add EVA and any other neighborhood board that wishes to join West Oahu Neighborhood Boards. Okay, no problem. Everybody see? Okay. So Chair's recommendation is that we add the agenda item under the exemption, HRS 97, 92-stash-7D to empower Second Vice Chair, Dr. Kiony Dudley, to include in the joint meeting of neighborhood boards, EVA and any other neighborhood board. So that is, our first vote is to add it to the agenda by two-thirds. Anyone wishing to publicly testify? Anyone of the board? Okay, it's been, anyone move to add this to the agenda? Dr. Dudley, is there a second? Dr. Amy Bosler, any discussion from board members on doing this appropriately? So that he can talk to these people on behalf of the board officially. Hearing no discussion. All those in favor say, you can do it.
You can do it.
Anyone opposed say no. Any abstentions by the same sign? Hearing none, you can do it, Dr. Dudley, by unanimous consent of the board to go and coordinate. We empower you. No, actually, we have to do one more vote because we just added it to the agenda. Psych. So we'll do this one even quicker. Is there any objection to Dr. Kiony Dudley coordinating with EVA and any other neighborhood board on setting a joint meeting, time, location, and place and agenda items? Okay, public testimony? Going once, going twice, going three times? Any discussion? Hearing no discussion. Chair's only asking for objections. Is there any objections? Hearing none, crickets? You can do it. Now we did it properly. We got it on the agenda and by unanimous consent. And by unanimous consent, we empower you to go make more work for us. So that's, so we just did. We voted on you going and talking to people to make more work for us. That's awesome. Or for the next board at least. Well, they can still choose not to do it because they have to then agendize. But you can do the administrative legwork. Okay? Final call, any further requests for future agenda items and board announcements? Now going to, our next scheduled meeting will be our regular meeting, Makilokapale Honakai Hala Neighborhood Board, number 34 is meeting on Wednesday, July 23rd, 2025, 7:00 PM, Kapale Hale Conference Rooms A and B and online via WebEx. This will be the first meeting of the new neighborhood board members. Our organizing meeting with the newest members. If you are interested in participating on any potential committees, please send your information to myself, makana.pares@gmail.com and we'll get it agendized so we can get you up and official on the first day if the board so votes. Okay, and with that, we call the meeting adjourned at 9:48 PM. Twelve minutes to spare, everyone. Mahalo. Everyone have a wonderful evening and we'll see you next time. Aloha.